I'm gonna open up the April 5, 2023 Select Coordinating. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I have no need or... So I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 15, 2023.
I'm going to come in and accept the minutes.
I have a second.
I'll start.
I have one thing I was confused about. The Cemetery Commissioners position. So we say in the minutes that we're gonna post the petition for 10 days on the website bulletin board. But then later on, we were talking to Bradley Horstman and he said he was interested in the position. Did we ever nominate him? Did we post it? Have we done anything with that?
No, that's a bit of a mistake. And that's why I was trying to understand who the chair is for the Cemetery Commission.
Krista, what?
Well, the process would be that we would appoint him. Then Belinda would send him a notice of appointment.
Well, the way I wrote it up in the minutes since I did is my understanding is Belinda was going to send me information on it and he was just going to look at it. But he was not making a commitment or indicating that he wished to be nominated.
Oh, okay. But then we met with him last week and he said, "I'm waiting for my cemetery meeting." So I got confused. So I don't know where we are. That's all.
Okay.
So we need to like make the pathway cleaner or something. What are we gonna do? What's the next step we want to do in this?
So you were gonna provide some...
What is Cemetery Commissioners' job description? Yes, which I need to pass. She knows.
Okay. And you've already sent that to him?
Yeah, it's sent it by email.
Didn't he respond it?
No.
Okay. I'll call him and find out.
All right. So if you wanna call him and find out if he's interested. If he's not, if you could post it, and then at our next meeting, you could officially appoint him. I mean, it doesn't really matter. They don't... They should be meeting now.
They will be meeting the end of April, beginning of May.
Right. Will be their annual meeting.
So...
Doesn't have time. So...
Yeah, Krista thought May would be good this year because of what from what I'm to the month.
I don't have anything else. I just wondered about that in the minutes. Does anyone else have any additions, correctionals, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? I as opposed. So carry. Do we have any community with us or comments? We'll move on to correspondence. Well, there's a notice of the public hearing for article electric to be our governor's electric bills. That is on Tuesday, March 4th at 7:00. April 4th.
What do you ask for that?
Yeah. And they were asking for an increase 13.3%, but it's already in the left. On March 1st, it went in the left. You saw it when you told me through your letter, no? And just... An email from the DLCT, the month this is in town about opioid settlement. I sent this to you, Kurt, and I wasn't sure what it exactly meant.
Yeah, so they had sent a notice. This is due April 14th, I believe. And this is a settlement among the drug companies nationwide. The state of Vermont applied for their share on the site. And every each town, if they apply, will be eligible for a 15%. The applications of the towns rest it goes into the state. The confusing part about it was they indicated that they were encouraging all the towns to sign on, get on board. And then I saw an email that Belinda had forwarded that had a DocuSign on it. And when you go to the DocuSign, somebody had already been in that. And did you go into the DocuSign?
No.
Somebody did. You didn't, did you? Okay. And you can't continue on DocuSign if somebody else has already been in it.
Oh. So I should check my email then. See if it gave you a link that I might have accidentally gone into?
Yeah. But I don't think you have to do anything. What DocuSign indicates is that if either Belinda goes in to sign it, it'll override anything you did.
Oh, okay.
Before we did that, I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
Yeah.
Credit?
It's done this now. Yeah, I think it's just...
We thought at first it was only the towns that had like a Walmart or something in, you know, a store in it.
Oh, no.
By the way, credit was you had to use it for the settlement money. It's being used for opioid crisis abadements. And I don't know what that means. That's what confuses me. It sounded like every town would get it, but then that you had to use it for...
Yeah.
And all I could think of was offsetting police investigations or something. I don't know.
It'd be nice to get some dark cams for the fire department and the first responders.
Yeah.
Right now, from what they said, it's $40. But if they start selling it over the counter, it may triple cost.
Wow.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it takes two, if not three doses.
Expensive. I don't know. The fire department asked it. But they do. There might be...
I don't know if they had it, but I know the wild county started to carry it.
All the time.
Okay. And then I think when we get to the... When I open up this DocuSign, it might uncover that question. I just stopped because I didn't want to wipe out something, somebody.
No, I know. I just read the email and sent it on to you. Something in here from Born's Energy. Propane exceeded contract of gallons.
Yeah, so...
We're actually getting a check. What?
So I'm not sure what you mean, but...
From this bill. We're paying, so our... So the contract is $1.95.
Right.
I know that. That's what the check is playing, but... But it says we have 38.6 propane exceeded contract gallons, 1.6821.
And it's how many gallons we got home.
So they're only charging us...
1.68. So I contacted Born's and what John came back with is he said, "It looks like we came close to the estimate of 3,500 gallons. Looks like usage was just about 3,900 in the past 12 months. We've already had you under contract in 23, 24 seasons. I can probably find an extra 500 gallons to add to the existing contract to make sure the entire amount remains locked in. However, I would suggest that you just let the amount load in the market. It's a small amount. You could get lucky in the market and it would be lower like it is right now. So there's a curve on it. And so his advice is...
What we're doing.
Do what we're doing.
And do we know... So we tell them how much we think we've used. Is do we base it on what we've used in the past?
Well, not for propane, well, there it's brand new.
Oh, so it's a combination?
Yes.
And they were guessing very bad. It was very close. It was pretty close.
So now we're gonna look at what we anticipate.
Okay. We have project managers report.
So I got a number of things here. But the website Phase 2. Belinda and I had a chance to talk with Bradley, who is going to take the lead on Phase 2 of the website. He has been working with Collaboration to get the hosting situation scheduled. We received a bill yesterday, I guess, from Collaboration for $570. Which they, Collaboration, is targeting us for working with Bradley, which has a little surprise to that.
Yeah. Is it working with them or for work that they've done?
If you look at the bill...
Yeah, but has anyone talked to them?
Yeah.
He just sent the bill. I did introductions from Bradley to Collaboration. Bradley just wanted to get access to our hosting, as he described. And in the process of there being a conversation between the two of them to get access, it looks like Collaboration did some updates. They did some new plugins and handled an outage situation. And they billed us for that. I thought it was a little excessive. And I don't know if that's because we had worked with them and we're now using Bradley for the Space 2 part and they're discharging us from that. I gotta call him and find out just, you know, what he's thinking.
Yeah, I think it's kind of hard under the boat. We need to make, kind of make up our mind.
That's what we're trying to do, yeah. In one of them, Collaboration has their unique own hosting.
Yeah.
And so they're completely in control. We're trying to pull it out. And I... That was weird, this building.
Well, sometimes you do have to pay for it, to pull it out.
Yeah.
We learned that with changing our land records program. It was boring.
Yeah. I just don't want these bills to be mounting up in the back of the seat. We'd get surprised.
Right.
So I talked with Bradley today. And he was a little surprised by it too, which suggested that we just stop. And I get a hold of Nathan and I jump out the next...
Sounds good.
Bradley thinks he can mount the Phase 2 up, but into June, he said, right?
I thought it was August. He's away till June.
August, but this summer.
I was thinking it would be up right before our next event.
So that's the status of the website. Norfolk Road paving bids have come in. We have two, one from Pike, one from Pikeston. They're within $200 or $300 of each other. And we have a third one out there. So we'll have three bids.
With a new grant?
Correct, yes. Guardrails. We have gone forward and asked to get into queue for installation of guardrails. We have $5,000 in this year's budget, $15,000 in next year's budget. So the lobbyette, who is the guardrail company, is happy to do all of the work, get the $5,000 payment right away, and get the $15,000 payment package by first. So very flexible in that respect. Out of the four jobs that they had quoted, keep us within budget. We had to give one of them up. And so the one we gave up is the school street bridge up here, where the guardrails now are very low to the ground. So there'll be one right across from the garage, Norfolk Road and East Hill Road. East Hill Road's gonna require that we get in touch with, part with the Leica, because they gotta pick down a couple of trees to get the right dimensions of the guardrail. And that looks like that's in the part with the Leica, by the way. So I think this is a matter of notification. 174 school streets that is... So Damian, who owns the property, as you know, went through the religious exemption route, then went to the housing authority route, was denied the housing authority route. And so he reapplied, which they consider to be an appeal. And today, I think we got notification that the appeal was declined as well.
I went to the woman, Ingrid, and she came back and said it's been denied.
So I think we're at the end of the line. If I understand it right, you get one appeal shot and that's it.
So now Mr. Davis will make up the deed for the new mowing.
Mowing bids, we just had one bid. The due date is April 15. It's a sealed bid. We've had three people inquire. Two have come to visit. But we've only had one that's actually submitted a bid. The municipal energy resilience program, Belinda and I spoke with the DLCT today to understand that a little bit better. This is grant money that can be used for energy efficiencies. And what it affords us is a free assessment. Energy assessment. Those assessments come at two levels. One is they have a walkthrough assessment and the other one is much more intensive and requires pretty significant documentation in the town. And she said that we choose one building to do that in. My thought was it would be the garage, because the garage is probably the most inefficient of all over town. This is a slow moving train, I think. We're at the very front end of it. And there's a question, there's a mini grant that we can apply for, for 1,000, I believe it is. Which would allow us, you can use that money to hire a consultant, to get a consultant to work with the town for ABG compliance and things like that. And we haven't decided whether to go for that mini grant or not. If you... There's no restriction on it. We can still apply for the bigger grant, which will come up in about a year, regardless whether you take this mini grant or not. Brownfield Study. As you know, we did Phase 1 Brownfield on 15 and we applied for Phase 2 and we're waiting for the LCPC.
LCPC.
Oh, that's right, LCPC. Born's Energy, we talked about that already. Opioid settlement, we talked about that. Gramson A. This is for the segments for water. And we, in the past, the state gave LCPC to assist with this project. This year, they're no longer assisting. So if the town wants to use LCPC this year, like they have in the past, there's a cost to that. And we're gonna meet with Rob tomorrow and see if we really need all of the features that he's providing. Where it was very useful for us last year was identifying the segments to work on. And secondly, we're dealing with the website where you have to enter all of your information. And he actually, he went all the way through and submitted all of the reports and so forth. But this year, he'll do the same, plus a lot more apparently, but there's gonna be a cost associated with that. Parking lot lease. So Rob is coming over tomorrow along with Adam Allen. Dylan will be here. Linda will be here. And the objective is to take a look at the parcel over here and try to understand how much of it we think we need to carve out for parking. The recommendation is that, from WeTrans, is just take what you need. It's all, the entire parcel's available to us, but just take what you need so you don't have maintenance issues for land that, you know, you're not gonna use it. It's wet over there. And there's also a stream that goes through it. And so we're trying to put all the heads together and map out what the cutout should be. Also including estimates of how much space you need for snowmobile trailer, truck. The largest you can do is, as you said, the length, the largest length that's legal on the road is 7 feet. And so we need to work that in the plan and try to understand how many trailers we might have space available to. So the meeting tomorrow really is to just put the heads together. Folks that have experience in this stuff. Adam Allen is coming over because he wants... If we choose to clear it, he might wanna put a gate there in it. He just wants to see the land itself.
If we clear it, where does the debris go?
I think it falls, well, the debris, the bit in the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's our land, I don't know.
It can go to the land.
Yes, some skin.
Yeah, I think the idea is that he does all the work, you know. And he may be reducing cost to his work if he gets to keep the wood. If the wood's any good. The transfer station gate replacement. I looked up what it costs to replace the gate at the transfer station. And the overall cost would be about $1,000. And...
We don't have it. I'll be perfectly honest. Don't have that money.
Oh, from the transfer station?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess what I said, Lord, if you wanna skip it, just deal with the gate as it is, you know?
It works. I mean, we're getting some fries from our hall and to pay our bills. We need to stay without bills.
Right.
It's under transfer station.
Andy Man. So Nathan took on a full-time job with Butternut. Also still working at the hardware store. And he is picking up garbage for recent projects, but it seems that everything else is kind of fallen off the table. It's one of those things where he just kind of faded away rather than cutting it off. So we're gonna put together an ad for the paper. See if we can get it replaced. We also have a lead from the fire department, one of the guys who's been there, might be a candidate. This is a really hard position to fill.
We did have an incident with water at the town hall. But we called on Burner. He's not back to work. He was able to help us with the home water filter because there was no pressure over there. But that's one of the jobs that needs to be done regularly and checking the fires and issues. There's lots of little things that can't be ignored.
Yeah. And you know, it's a lot of, there's a lot of detailed things and I'm not the best mother hen to, you know, stay on top of all of these things that you can do. So we really need to find somebody that's not gonna fade away, honestly. Very hard. But in the meantime, we're gonna have to, I guess we're gonna have to go over and check the salt every now do whatever I have to do to, you know, fire extinguishers and so.
Well, Burner did check them, so we're all stuck at the town hall. He did let me think that need to be done here. Yeah.
You do.
Yeah. I don't know if Burner, he had a Nathan, I don't even know. Maybe he left.
No, he's going back to Monash, for London.
Yeah, he never officially dropped the need to go there.
Got another job, kind of like Nathan. He faded away. I mean, it's not someone that is fading today. We can't, you know.
It's not like it's a full-time job.
Or we couldn't just... You know, he just kind of left and we couldn't just wait until he had a Saturday off or something.
Right. Same situation.
Right. He said he would help us until he goes back to work, which would be probably soon.
End of April is what I'm hearing.
But he would keep an eye on it.
Tree wardens, I see, was out there. Been there elsewhere. Health office, service, that haven't come.
It looked like it was 2027, wasn't it? That's five years.
Isn't something changed about that though? Wasn't there? No, that was a fire.
I don't know a lot of tree wardens on here. It wasn't found there, the tree one.
Now, where did this hit?
I don't know.
Okay, well, the reason for the... Okay, well, the reason for the question.
So I think next meeting we should do these appointments.
Yes, that's who I had it scheduled.
May. I'm going to reach out to a couple of people and someone who isn't attending meetings and say, you know, he's a tenant or go away. But on this one, I have two thousand twenty-seven. The health officer. No, two thousand twenty-two.
No, we found out it's two thousand twenty-three. We had, we were wrong. So it's this June, end of this June. Okay?
Okay.
But it's June thirtieth.
We have bags.
Four boxes. Michelle got more.
Yeah. And then signs. People really like the "Love Where You Live" signs. They've become pretty big. So I wanted to suggest that we refresh that order. There is money in the ordinance committee budget for this year.
Yeah, I know this is how it was.
So any objection to going and moving that?
It's in your budget, yours.
Yeah, this one's pretty dirty out here. That got pointed out to me the day of the meeting.
Green burial, we talked about green burial in our last meeting, did quite a bit of research on it, ended up some more today. I went to the V L C T to see if they had any templates regarding green burial. They do not.
A template of what though?
A policy or, yeah, or ordinance or something. They do not, and they've just referred me to that dig deeper document. And then the planning commission that we leave is going to meet this Friday night. And I asked to be on the agenda to, to discuss it with them. Because there is a thing, there are some restrictions. And it does require a process to follow up at each step on this. But then the question came up, is this an ordinance or is this a zoning bylaw? Or is it just a permit that's run by the town clerk?
Right, so there's a lot of questions. So I personally do not feel it's a zoning and I have to have a meeting that went to Steph. Asking him if any other town have one. And he's going to check on me. I believe it's a health ordinance. And it's up to us to set up the process. I did bring one copy of Morrisville's. It is signed by the health officer and it lays out the process of what you can and can't do. That's my thinking. That it does not fall under zoning whatsoever. How would it fall under zoning though?
It's a structure.
But it's something on the land.
Yep. Well, I talked to Todd Thomas in Morrisville. He said absolutely not. He didn't feel was that it was not really a land use issue. That he advises, that he advises people that come in and want to bury someone on their land, but they need to think that, you know, when you die and your kids are selling your lot, are you going to be able to sell it to someone knowing there's dead bodies on the old property? You know, and so they put in the land records, it's part of the record. And they have to have like a GPS coordinate of where the burial is on the farm. They have to.
The question is who administers the program? I mean, that's kind of.
The health officer or the health board. Or the sub-board could.
Yeah, because this requires, so there's some front sentence for water districting.
Yeah, it says in here, burial site must be at least a hundred feet from drilled wells and a hundred fifty feet from shallow wells for surface water.
Right, and so as far as the process goes, I think somebody has to, somebody from the town has to go.
Well, they don't now. I mean, they don't always go out. When you give out a zoning permit, they don't go out. You're signing that you're, you're certifying that you're doing them. Someone doesn't go up to each one of these. D R Bs, they don't go out. At all.
Okay.
The only thing that I've ever seen anyone go out for is reclassifying a road.
My opinion, I don't think we should let it.
It's a state law. They can, we don't, we can't.
That's the problem because where we are, there's enough bears. They're going to start digging.
Well, this law has been in effect since two thousand fifteen. And we can do some more research and see whether the towns do. There's actually four cemeteries in the state that are hybrid cemeteries that allow regular caskets and then reburials on a once-in-a-month pillar.
Is that the home cemetery? Is that the home cemetery?
It's a whole good problem, right? Very big, very.
Three other ones, another one's up right in the old school. That's a big one.
Do we need to have an answer right off?
No, no, he's suggesting public inquiry and trying to respond to people.
So if we allow them to do it in the cemetery, is that going to be an issue rather than on our parcel of property? I think would be a little bit.
But we can't, I don't think, I don't know. I'd have to.
Because once you start getting into water, like I said, wildlife.
Well, they do have water, but I mean.
I'd rather see them doing it in the cemetery, so they just.
Well, it is possible to do it in a cemetery if the cemetery commission grants it.
So that's something we probably should discuss.
And sets aside space for it. And does the GPS markets. That can be done. According to Secretary of State, what is it, three and a half feet deep or something like that? Is deep enough to avoid wildlife. According to that.
Well, I hate to say it, but I've had bears dig up a few. Pets. And even though they were good three, four feet deep.
Right, okay.
Well, you know, that's part of, the people that like green burials, that's part of the whole ecology of it and I don't think they would mark.
Really?
Well.
I don't want to play that role.
Yeah, I don't know what's on.
Your dad.
I know, but they still.
So I thought I would just, I mean, is there any, is there any downside of presenting this to the planning commission or should I just stay with it?
I think I'd really go with the mission, the cemetery commission and have something set aside and say, there you go.
Yeah, we can definitely talk about it. I do know some people in town who have tried to sell on their own land.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is.
Now, in Morrisville, the burial site can only be used for immediate family members. I don't know if it said that in D P.
That's something they put in my thing.
Yeah. I didn't read the whole digging thing, the limit on the copy here.
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Deb wrote it too.
Did it say anything in there, no, no? Because otherwise it'd be, if you put other people on your property, it'd be kind of creating the cemetery, which might then mean some kind of zoning.
But it didn't say how many.
No, it just says.
Limit any.
Immediate family members. Property owners, parents, spouse, children and siblings.
Well, I don't think you'd offer it to a stranger. Maybe, I don't know.
Long lost person.
So you're close to.
Why should I, just?
I personally would say yes, but not to more members.
I would think it would just be more with the cemetery commission.
Okay.
But I think, think we, we can, we need to reach out and do something. If no one needs to know right now, we can keep working on it.
I don't think it's immediate, but in the future, in a year, I would say, we'll need to know.
Okay. And then finally, I've been doing a lot of research on vacant dangerous buildings. I know that our health officer has deemed some buildings in town to be condemned. But there is, that's all really is, health officer deeming them to be condemned. There is no record or paperwork or et cetera. And when I dig into that, what I find is the town really needs to have an ordinance which identifies the steps you go through to determine a building to be dangerous. And there's some really good samples of it. V L C T has some good ones. Town of Woodstock has a really good one. And.
What was the one from Johnson? Is that the same thing or a little different?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a little different. I think that their, their problem has been unfortunate. So I think it's really, you know, maybe the select board needs to be the ones to enforce an ordinance like this. Because just claiming that a building is closed or dangerous doesn't, sticking a piece of paper in the wind, that doesn't, there's no way that's allowed.
Does Morrisville have an ordinance? I don't know.
Think it does.
Think it's our capital.
So my question to the board is, you know, is that would you be okay with continuing to research this and to put together a basic set of ordinance for review?
I would say so. In light of the conversation at the recent D R B meeting where a lot of allegations were made which were untrue, that if we had something in, you know, steps and procedures, you know, that could be verified, I think that's important too. Keeping our town government. I don't know, whatever the word is.
Transparent?
Well, yeah.
You need at least to have at least a couple of hearings in there somewhere in the public and don't say the landlord can show up and all that.
Right, but I mean, at least if you have a process and step in place and you have a file on whether yes or no that building is condemned, it's a lot different than people just screaming, you know, sentences and accusations against other people. Causes a lot of problems.
Because if you have someone that knows architect and says, that's condemned because it's dangerous to go into.
I believe the state has some criteria.
Yeah, they do. And even the term condemned has, you identify it as a health hazard or dangerous, those are the dark or vacant. I've seen ones where if it's, if a building is vacant for six months and it's in, you know, visibly in poor shape and is not owned by a seasonal person, then it is eligible for the ordinance review. But condemned also means in other situations, eminent domain, where a town may want to take over a piece of property through eminent domain and that's one of the terms. They used the term condemned when they did that. So this, getting these models from V L C T is very helpful. Okay. Jump over to the highway department. I'm really going to start trying to report on what highway department is doing this first brush, is, is, we're still in semi-winter here. And so these are what is anticipated projects for the summer. Of course, grading, they've been doing a pretty good job of grading today. The great, the board started raining. Burn removal is an ongoing process. The road segments require to do those. And they take quite a bit of time in planning. Roadside mowing, of course, brush cutting. This is something we have not done in the past, but it's time to do it and that is improving line sight in some areas.
So are they going to put roadside mowing out to Goodstone?
Yes, yeah, and I know that Alan.
William Allen.
William Allen is, is going to do.
But are they going to put it in the paper for anyone else?
I am, yeah. Brush cutting will actually be done by our crew, but we have put money in the budget to rent the equipment needed to get that done. So we'll proceed to guardrail installation. This is something, this is one of those details that slips by all the time and that's a roadside inventory and replacement.
So I wondered about that Gulf Road Bridge. I see they put the sign up about one way, but we didn't have one of those long things that go on the bridge.
Yeah. We're going to go with it. It's missing. You know, you know, it's, there are, if you drive around the town, there's streets and roads, road signs that are missing.
Yeah.
There's signs that are in the ditch.
Yeah.
Leaning ones. A lot of them are leaning.
Yeah.
Like the clown one I haven't mentioned.
That walking sign on West Tilco on Burne Farm, I noticed you can't see it anymore, mustn't be in the ditch.
Yeah. I think I have it every winter. You gotta live in the ditch and she went in. So we want to formalize that process and have them focus more on the road signs. And then with the roadside, North Wilka Road, Overlake Project, assuming we can get funding for it on the south end, and then we're picking up the project that was not done last year for the north end. for, um, the north end, uh, North Hooker Road. Um, plus Dylan wants to, um, I say pavement overly, that's not what I meant. It's, um, what do you call it when you building starts?
Ceilings?
Ceiling, thank you.
Yeah.
Correct, ceiling. He wants to do that, um, because it took a hit. Uh, ditching, of course, and culvert installations. Line straining on class three paypros, this would go through B trans. And as long as we sign up for it, get it in the queue, um, they will get that done. It's, uh, Michelle's coming in at the end of this month, and we want to talk to her about that and sync it up with the other work we're doing in, um, North Hooker Road. And finally, is stay mat, arcing line of cobbles. This, this one I hear is just a classic. You can, every time they fill it, um, they graded it, they put, filled it with gravel. Everything.
It rains and it just.
It doesn't hold. Um, so Dylan fills the solutions of stay mat, that, uh, that curtain right there, you know, you're kind of. So this is probably not comprehensive, but it's just starting. The major. That's what I think.
Well, a lot of you have been busy.
I thought you were going to say.
Oh, this is. I'm just tiring, yeah.
Any other questions for Kurt? If not.
Well, a lot to the forest committee vacancy, um. The chair Gordon reached out to me and asked if, um, Louie Carter could be nominated to fill a vacancy position on the forest committee. Um, Melissa Jolly has told me a while ago that she was not going to stand on the committee. You know, the opening. He has been going to the meeting now, so I'll make a motion to, if you don't mind, um,
Wait.
Record the forest committee voting member.
Yeah, I'll second.
For any questions about that? If there was a favor, say aye. opposed, so carried. The loyal vibrant act town representative.
Do you have a number?
We didn't.
Um, okay, so the loyal vibrant is. They're, they're pointing out what they want to reach the, the Hooker representative. And, uh, that was Andrew Ross. Um, he's been very good. And, um, so I have the paperwork to, um, suggest that we reappoint Andrew Ross to the loyal vibrant for another year. And so.
I'll make that motion to appoint Andrew Ross, um, to be the town representative of the loyal vibrant. Yeah, one second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, so carried. Didn't we have, um,
We had.
Bradley Horstman, did he? I have him written down here.
We, um, we had to reinstate Bruce Wheeler on this meeting.
Mm-hmm, we did.
But we did not have the, uh, current form, so I now have the current form. Um, we have already, uh, we reinstated Bruce Wheeler and we've all ready appointed Bradley as the, um, alternate and all meaningful sign.
Okay, correct. And for the session discussion.
So I send out P and L's of the transfer statement to everybody. It's pretty well, um, explanatory, um, the we're breaking even, but not quite. We're like forty dollars in the hole, but we have another piece of paper shows all the bills that we still have unpaid. And it's showing that there's about twenty seven, twenty eight hundred dollars in March bills that should have been paid by now. And so we're about that much behind. So I'm closing again, which I brought to the joint for if the town can make a loan of three thousand to the transfer station, I think we can pay it off in about six months, with five hundred each month. And still, price is current. If we make some changes at the transfer station. Um, Sylvia was not working this Easter Sunday, so I have volunteered to do it, to stay open, and Deb has volunteered with me, if she's still with me. Okay, she is. Um, so we can just maybe get a first hand. I mean, I can sit here and tell you what I think is wrong, but until I'm there myself and have interaction with people and see how it works, I really don't know. So I thought, you know, we could go up and just try it since Sylvia would not be working anyhow, and I think we need that revenue from Easter um, to continue to take care of these bills. Uh, we will have less bills for the board because we've gotten rid of the, um, cardboard uh, box and the pole that will happen with that, and we're putting everything in regular recycling, and it seems to be handling it. Um, because, you know, COVID is a little over, so people are getting a few less boxes, let me put it that way. Uh, I, I just think that we're going to have to going forward, maybe experiment a little bit and figure out how we can make this work without losing money, and Andy Don't was in just the other day, and he was praising the fact that we have that transfer station. He just thinks it's absolutely wonderful for the town that our townspeople are able to go there and do that and not have to travel to All Meadows or, you know, somewhere else. So I think, just my own personal opinion, that the townspeople would want us to keep it open.
Yeah, so there's, I guess there's two things there. One is, uh, borrowing the money, right? And the other is, um, as you brought up at the last meeting, ideas about, um, how we can better run the transfer station. Uh, we did run a front porch forum, um, with trying to do a little bit of public outreach. Um, that will also be available in a flyer. Um, my computer completely died, so. I got a.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out what happened.
Exactly. Um, and, um, and then I think in your packets, there's a list of just wild ideas about, um, what can be, what can possibly be done for the transfer station.
So always, historically, this time of year, um, through the winter, it's hard. Uh, the cash flow is not there almost, and then it picks up a little. Um, it seems to be a bit, um, low this year, um, but if you look, if you look at the P and L, I mean, compost, we took in five hundred and twenty-six dollars. We spent seventeen hundred and fifty-three hundred. There's something wrong with it. Either we're not, you know, we're not charging people the correct amount and we're, um, regardless, um, well, see in compost, you get both your moving fee and the compost in it, so.
And you went up in price too.
Right. Um, I mean, that's brilliant. That's twelve hundred dollars off. So what is, I think you have to look at each thing and, and understand what is going on.
I agree. I don't think it's, uh, raise prices sort of thing. I think it's a, how do we be smart about collecting as much as we can?
Or the correct amount.
Correct amount, and also try and make maybe, don't have a pole so much. So if we have to close early on Sunday, we might have to do it. You know what I'm saying? Uh, you have the garbage, you have the open container, so you can use that for the garbage. The only thing I have to do is call Matt on Monday and ask him to pick it up my way so we don't get vectors.
You don't want to do that during their season, right?
Well, I know, yeah. I, I agree with that.
Every year we, I've been up there with the rake.
I know. So the other thing is, is turning people away or closing early.
Well, the thing is, I always go Saturday morning, just in case.
Well, my thing is, since I work, and I work the long distance, I have to do my business on a Saturday. But if it's not open Sunday, I'd rather see it open Sunday, both Saturdays. Because that's when a lot of us people do our business.
Are you working on Saturday?
No, but a lot of people do. If you're working part-time, you got three or four jobs, you may be working Saturdays.
I think we've talked about that before, and we've looked at the income, and that doesn't prove it. It doesn't.
Well, if you're going to make it one day, I still think it should be a Sunday, not a Saturday.
Oh, no, I think, I think it's a Saturday, but I'm saying close early on a Sunday, be open like from nine until noon, but close like an hour early. If you don't have to close.
What you're saying is, oh, and we have done it. If the things are full, we close.
Right.
Early. There's no ifs, buts, or.
Because that justifies a pull. If I'm, we're sending that thing every week and it's only three quarters full, we are losing revenue. We really are. And that seems to be, and I feel some of this is my fault, that I was trusting Sylvia to know when we should send them. And I think he is not experienced enough to make that. So I think he does, does need a little supervision in that. I was going to go up this week, but Deb and Kurt have gone up Sunday, and they knew how full they were, so they let me know, yeah, they're good to go.
So I think it's more fear that they might overflow and then people.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, he was really, when I said we're getting rid of the cardboard one, he was a little upset with me. But I explained to him that we would just close early. Well, people are going to be upset. I said, well, tell them.
Call me. Well, you won't see them because you're closed.
That's true. But when he's putting up the sign, close early due to being full, I told him I made a sign that he could put up saying that, because basically, we had to close because we are full.
I, I've gone this day afternoon, been turned away. That's just, if you wait till Sunday afternoon.
Yeah.
Right.
The rakes, or Sunday morning, whichever. I've seen times, I've seen at times where the recyclable was so old before the cardboard. So you just have to go back over to Sylvia and say, I need my bill back.
Or you need to ask them for the rake and push it down.
I, I don't.
If you push it down, well, you can get a lot more in there.
Right.
So I told Sylvia to drop the money off Saturday in the lockbox. I'll pick it up Monday, uh, Sunday, and we'll call up Deb and I will open it up. And we'll see how many people I buy, and how many people come on Sunday, so we can see if we've justified having open on like a weekend. Easter for some people is really important, other people it's not, so.
We should put a notice in front of which for.
I'll do that. Yes, I'll do that tomorrow. Yes.
So what do you, uh, feel about lending? This is not, we're not stepping on new ground here, for, um, about lending the uh, transfer station three thousand dollars for six months. To pay these bills, yeah.
So we bring.
I know that Davis Lee is really.
They had a major repair on the truck. And it is allowed by Asgard and the state. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, no motion?
Don't make the motion that we lend to the transfer station three thousand dollars for a six-month period of time.
That's all I need for.
I'll second.
Okay. I will wait for Kurt to come down to vote.
I think in six months, if we consider some changes up there that we can turn this around. Of course, this is all wasted, right? We should be making money, and I just don't know why.
Are they still taking just one of the composts? Ben's at once, we didn't have time to.
Well, I don't know. When I went up there, I went up there a couple weeks ago and hung out with Sylvia, and he hadn't had it tied down. I don't see why he can't put the empty container in his shed. There is no reason. He could put it in the, um, tire shed, um, just so people don't see it.
I thought Sunday we might move one and just leave one there and see how full we can get it. Because if only one is out, they're only going to dump one.
Is there anyone else that picks up?
I don't know.
The trouble is, it's not even worth, um, buying our own containers and taking it to Johnson. Uh, we'd have to pay someone more money than it costs for them to pick it up.
Right.
Which is twenty dollars.
Is there any possibility we could ever do composting on Sunday?
No, you need all kinds of state permits.
Okay.
But, um, I don't see how you're not getting twenty dollars worth of recording of in, in one of those containers.
I pay a dollar and sometimes we put like a small.
I, I, uh, and I always put in a little bit, so this should be.
And the other question I had from Sylvia went, I kind of rounded that answer, was are you charging for recycling? Because it's a dollar a blue barrel. Well, and I never figured out a straight answer, so I think that's a little education we have to do. It's not the way it used to be where you bring your trash and get your recycling free.
No, he's charging me.
He is, so, because he's charging me too, but I didn't know.
I, I told him, said I got two.
Yeah.
Twenty-five barrels and one garbage.
Yeah.
He's always saying eleven dollars.
And I know he wasn't charging cardboard, but now that it's going in the recycling, I want him, if they have been of cardboard, I want him charging.
It's a dollar, it's a dollar for fifteen gallons, right?
So, but.
Because I bring my recycling in thirty-three cans, so like, so like thirty-three gallons can. You charge them two bucks.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, that's what he's supposed to. All right, so, you know, I just wanted to. cause I, I have seen some people, when I've been up there, put recycling in, I'm not really sure if they paid for it.
Yeah, usually my cardboard, I cut it up, so it's a lot easier to tow.
If you go to store, you better cut you gear.
If you're, if you're charging your lawn, because with you, it's a flat, I charge you.
Yeah.
That's two blocks, cut it up and then wash it, tie it together, throw it out.
Right.
Done.
All right, hello. Three votes to pass it.
Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of, of lending the town, uh, town transfer station three thousand dollars for six months, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So do we have any other things on this list that you wanna discuss? Do you don't think about it? Um.
I would like you all to look over the town P and L. I do not see anything that bounced out at me that was a concern. But if anybody does have anything that they feel is, um, lumpy or anything, please let me know. I will give you an update on the audit. It's finally finished. The wording is in place, and I'm just waiting for the final vote.
No one else? Is there any other suggestions on the transfer station? Um, I entertain a motion to overturn.
Only one.
Okay. Seven eleven.
Oh, that's a good, yeah, I.
So my thing.